Hey guys.
Hi, how are you?
Who is everybody?
I'm so.
Good.
Are you doing all right?
Yep.
You're freeze.
It's always an adventure figuring out how the zoom is working, but.
Did see it's easier than navigating what Mike Casey refers to as the Ho Chi Minh Trail on Manitou Avenue toward the west of town. Oh, boy.
A minute there. I'll have to weigh in on the wet east end is just as bad. Every day it's an adventure to know how to get to Manitou Avenue.
Why they all have to happen at the same time is beyond me.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Julie is making the right.
Julia got it.
Yep.
Yeah. Hey, Michelle, did you see our new sidewalk?
I have not.
Have you seen it, Julia?
Are you referring to the one that goes between your house and my house that they designed just for us?
No, no, I'm thinking about the one just in front of our house. And it's beautiful. They did a great job. I'm very happy.
Good. I'm glad.
And they just did it in front of your house.
So that we were the ones paying for it. So that's the only part.
The ADA sidewalks in front of the cliff house and there, there have been a few other improvements have been, have been very nice. And the park looks lovely.
Yep.
Can somebody tell me what's going to happen past the roundabout where, where you come out by the liquor store, you know, past the post office? Are they gonna drop part of the road or what's gonna happen? Or is it gonna be so beef drunks are gonna go off? And hang off onto the, the lower road.
I don't get it. I keep on Dennis and I every morning when we go to school, we're like, this doesn't make sense to us. It's so.
Does anybody know?
No.
No. I haven't actually ventured up there to see what it is. So I don't know that I know what you're talking about, but.
If you ever plan to do it, plan for an hour.
That's why I haven't done it.
Well, on Western Manitou Avenue, they kind of finished more or less the southern lane, but not the northern and they're really different at night.
Three feet maybe.
Yeah.
Well, that's weird.
Okay, well, um, are we aware of anybody that's not going to show up, Michelle?
I did not hear from anybody.
Dylan gonna be here?
No. We have a, a person that we've hired Rebecca Allen, you may see her in the attendees and Rebecca is doing the minutes for planning commission and HPC for us. So that's going to relieve Dylan of having to do those. And then he'll be training to do some staff reports. So for those meetings where he's presenting, then you know, he'll be here. Otherwise, if he doesn't have something on the agenda, then he won't have to be.
Oh, well, good.
Well, that's great. So it looks like we have one alternate here. So we might as well bring her over.
All right.
Becky from PPRBD, Michelle.
Pardon?
Is that Becky from PPRB formerly or currently a PPRBD?
No, different. She's a Manitou resident.
Rebecca Allen.
Think she may go also by Anna. Okay, promote to panelist. Let's get Gloria over there.
I have some questions about the word promote.
Depends on your, the way you look at it, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Well, as I've learned with every promotion, there comes some, some downside. So hey.
Demotion.
Okay, okay. And there's Gloria. She's muted, but she's here. So why don't we just get going? I'll call the meeting to order. This is the October 13th, 2021, meaning of the Manitou Springs Planning Commission. And our first item of business is roll call. First, I'll call Mike Casey.
I'm here.
Carrie Storm.
Present.
Julie Simmons. Tip Reagan.
Present.
Gloria Latimer.
Present.
And Dave Armstrong.
Present.
Okay, so we have a quorum and first item of business is approval of the minutes of the September 8th, 2021 meeting. Someone like to make a motion or corrections or anything?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, then all in favor, just raise your hand.
Carol be abstaining.
Okay. Okay, so that carries with two or six seconds. Wow, we have, we have a full panel. What do you know? Okay.
Alan, perhaps I should abstain too. I wasn't, wasn't quite on the ball.
Yeah, I guess you were at the work session. I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, so that carries five with two extensions.
So that makes your math work better.
Well, I, yeah, it's just obviously we had three and then all of a sudden there were seven. That's great. Okay. So we'll move on to unfinished business and I'll just quickly state the process. We oh, wait a minute now. Before we get going, I don't see the applicant here. Michelle is.
Well, actually.
Well, that's I'm sorry. We're the only applicant. You're right. Okay. Sorry.
That's all right. I had to do that a few times myself. I kept thinking I needed to email somebody and then realized I didn't.
Yeah, okay. Um, are there any conflicts or ex parte contacts to disclose? And seeing none, we'll go ahead and call item two that's rezoned 2105. Hillside low density residential park, public hearings, zero Topeka Avenue. This is City of Manitou Springs applicant.
So. Michelle, sorry, Ellen, you were, you were gonna describe the process?
Well, you know, I, I was since there's nobody here. I, I was.
Sorry, I'll be, I'll shut up.
Yeah, well, I started to and then I realized, then I said, oh, the applicant's not here. And then I realized, Michelle corrected, she's the applicant or we're the app. The city's the applicant. So I think.
Sorry. Okay, okay.
I think we're fine.
We appreciate your eagle eye.
Exactly. So yes, this is a rezoning. This is the public hearing. You, the planning commission had the initial meeting in September and scheduled the public hearing for this meeting. This is a parcel that's jointly owned with a nonprofit called Save the, Save the Flats and the city. There are a couple of parcels up there that are owned in this way and they were purchased to use for park and or open space purposes. The city actually staff had thought that this had been rezoned when the other parcel that's across Topeka a little bit to the east. Up on Higginbotham was done about three years ago. We thought this parcel had also been done. Evidently it fell off the list somehow. And so we're just circling back around to get this into the correct zone. As staff noted at the last meeting, there are plans to look at some park development up there and there, this part of the property also is used as a helipad during emergency or disaster events. And so that will, that use will be retained and incorporated into the park planning. The code, the zoning code indicates that all but most zones require that you abut a similarly similar zone. So residential against residential parks is one of the zones that doesn't require a budding of a similar zone district. It basically is conceived to go anywhere against any, any zone district. And certainly any, any zone district or use that we have in Manitou, there, most of them at least would not be inappropriate to have a park next to it. Let's see, staff went through the, as we, as I indicated at the last meeting, staff did go through the criteria for the zone change. And found that it, the proposed rezoning is in conformance with Plan Manitou. The future land use plan showed this property as, as park. The parks opens parks trails and open space plan or the post plan as we call it identifies this as a future park. And it, as I'd noted, it was purchased for this purpose. So it's consistent with Plan Manitou and the other cities adopted plans and also the intent for purchasing it with public funds. The require the request conforms with or complies with the applicable statutory provisions. Staffs noted the provisions for that. There has been a substantial change in the characteristics in this area. It was entirely at one point residentially zoned. However, it's been used for years. Even back before the highway bypass was built for staging and major construction projects. The, the major change though, to the property happened when US 24 bypass went through. It was used by C dot. It was flattened off. Graded pretty severely. Filled pretty severely. And that's, we call it Higginbotham flats because that, that's exactly what it is, a big wide flat area. Most of it was rezoned into commercial. You have storage units up there. And so there has been some pretty significant changes to that area in the last 20 plus years. There's no indicate indication that the rezoning will have any adverse impact on provision of public facilities and services. Staff notes that if the proposed parks up in that area have public restrooms, there is sewer line adjacent, pretty close to that property of a main that serves the storage unit property. There's also a water line. So for any irrigation or restroom purposes, we have the facilities up there. There's no indication that that's going to have any kind of higher risk to natural hazards or geologic hazards. And certainly through the planning of any park improvements, some of that will be looked at in regard to if we need to have a geologic hazards report or if there's any kinds of certainly there'll be soil sampling. If there's anything built up there and that type of thing. As noted, it's compatible with surrounding land uses, park zone can go anywhere adjacent to any other zoning district. And is, is the subject land suitable for the proposed use? Staff found that it is. It again was purchased for this, for this purpose and this property and the property across, especially the one across that's already been rezoned and it's owned jointly has always served as kind of a overlook. And both properties, you get a magnificent view of, of overlook of town. So I think it'll be a really nice thing for, to see what, what's done with that as far as being able to get some public use up there. Staff also for this more full report after the initial report for, for this public hearing went through all of the application requirements. There really wasn't a lot in regard to supporting documents or anything. We did at the last feeding and I began included with this staff report provide, provide you with a map, a colored map showing the different zone districts in this area and the subject property. You can clearly see where the adjacent green zoning that of the parcel up there that's also used and owned jointly is located and how the proximity works together. Staff did go through the public services and facilities impact report. There were some items that either are not applicable or really are going to be more applicable as they actually do the park planning. And basically staff found that there isn't anything in that public, certain, public facilities and services impact report that would be detrimental or would not support the rezoning of the property for the eventual park use. Staff did not require a citizen participation plan. Since this is just a single property, it was publicly noticed. It was posted. It was letters were sent out and we actually sent letters. I think it was to 500 feet surrounding the property and got one one comment for this meeting of support by a former council person that's noted in your, in your report there. And we've not received any adverse comments from either our internal reviews or or from outside zoning. So staff based, the staff recommendation is based on the above information and provided in the staff report. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning of zero Topeka Avenue at the tax parcel noted meets the criteria and requirements for changing the zone designation of the property. Staff recommends planning commission forward a recommendation to city council for rezoning of the property from hillside low density residential to parks. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for staff? David?
Michelle, could you describe the potential access and or parking for the parcel if it is developed as a park?
Sure. So there is a frontage road, for lack of a better term, called Higginbotham Road. And that's how you get to all the properties up there, the storage, the self-storage units. And then there's a couple of vacant parcels that are commercially zoned as well. So you, on this property, Higginbotham Road goes right by there. And you would not have to go on Topeka Avenue, which is the right of way. If you look on the map that's in the staff report, that's the right of way that separates those two green areas. This, the, the green outline and then the solid green area are the two parcels that, that the city owns with, say, the flats. Topeka Avenue is not really developed. And so depending on how those two parcels are developed, either together or separately, there could be some connection across Topeka. You might enter this parcel from either Higginbotham or Topeka or both. It may be that this parcel will serve as parking for the overlook park or you know, there could be some combination on those properties. Staff, they really have not. The Parks Department hasn't really designed or started into that process of developing the plans for the park or the parks. And so, yeah, they'll have to look at whether one or both properties have, both have parking or if it's mainly one, but it's got good access. It's visible from the highway and easily accessible from both the highway and Serpentine.
A second question. If both parcels are zoned park and in the future, the city would determine that it was in the best interest of the city to sell the property for commercial development consistent with the adjacent properties. Would that be, would that be viable? Possible?
Well. From my understanding, once we have spent public funds purchasing property, and I don't know for sure whether it was open space or parks funds that participated in the purchase. We would not be able to sell the property once we've spent fun, those funds without a public vote. So it's just the same as if somebody wanted to say the city decided, we don't need Sotheby's Springs Park anymore. We want to sell it. That would have to go to a public vote. So.
The reason is I did a concept drawing for the area as a park for a citizens group several years ago. And it is, it does have, it's a spectacular setting and could make a great part. But you kind of wonder how much use it would get. So that was the reason for my question. I don't, I don't know how helpful or relevant that was, but yeah, thank you.
No, that's, yeah, I, I understand that. That's, I'm sure those are the kinds of things that as the Parks Department goes through the process of, of looking at how to put some public use up there. You know, they'll be looking at that as well.
Residential.
Pardon?
Go ahead, David. Okay. Are there any other questions for staff? Okay. Well, I'll open the public hearing. And see no hands raised. I will close the public hearing. So we're at the deliberation stage. If anybody would like to make a motion tip?
I'm happy to support this. And while we have your ear, Michelle, some people have suggested that it'd be really cool to have a gondola running from up there down to, to Manitou. I've heard that from a lot of people. I'm just saying I love that idea. It's not really germane, but it sort of follows on David's comment on some of the possible uses that could take place. So I'm just going to say that I like it. And I'm happy to make a motion to approve rezone 2105 with all the staff's findings and recommendations.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, and all in favor, raise your hand. Say aye. Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. And this will go on to city council, I guess in just November.
First meeting in November.
Yeah, okay. Great. So let's move on. The next item is subdivision waiver 2101 encroachment into no build area 325 Spring Street, James Murphy of Murphy Building and Remodeling applicant on behalf of John R Edgar owner.
So the, I've been working with the applicants to look at revising the subdivision waiver request and better define the area of encroachment and and the actual 30% slope area so that they can present a more comprehensive request to the commission. They're working on that. They've got their surveyor and their engineer working on some things. So the request is to postpone to the November 10th regular meeting so that they can have a little more time to submit the information, the revised information that's, that's going to eventually go to you all.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to postpone? No, nobody wants to make a motion. Carrie.
Make a motion to postpone.
A second?
Second it.
Okay, any discussion? In all favor, raise your hand. Okay, that passed unanimously. And I'll just make one editorial comment. If you ever go to do a site visit there, I recommend walking if you have the time. It's a really scary, scary road on our map that the Public Works did. They marked Spring Street as failed and it definitely feels like it to me. I wasn't sure I was going to get out of there when I came back. But anyway, move on to other business. Item four is review of planning commission draft standard operating procedures.
So we had set this aside for quite a while. And so I basically had started, started it over and, cause I needed to do either updated or new SOPs for all the boards and commissions. It's one of our, our goals. And I do have to apologize. I realized as I was looking through everything tonight, I had excerpted, exerted some sections from the municipal code and I am doing the same exercise with HPC and I intended to take the excerpts that I had done for HPC and substitute the planning commission section for what's in the eight, that's listed as the HPC section. And I either got distracted or for some reason I thought I had done it, but I realized I put the HPC's version in your packet. So I will, I will update that tomorrow and send out because I wanted you to see what the, in the municipal code, your section, there's a general section. That's the same for all the boards and commissions. That's the first one, that chapter 2.09. And then there's sections individual for each board and commission for the things that are a little different. And so that's the section I need to provide. And then there's also a conflict of interest section that is referenced in these SOPs. So I am more than happy to discuss, go through. You know, however, the commission wants to, to do that, I do not. The intent is that I don't want to rush you through these. I wanted to get them in front of you. You know, if nobody has any questions or comments and you want to approve it tonight, you certainly could. But if it needs to go, you know, a cup to a couple of meetings or at least the next meeting after everybody's had a chance to really go through them, then you know, I'm more than happy for that as well. Also, the, the city attorney has not yet reviewed any of the draft SOPs, the updates that, that I put together. And so that is something that I would probably want to do even before maybe the commission final, finally approved a version just to make sure that he's good with the way things are, some of the things are stated and we are relying on an older memo from a previous attorney that talks about conflicts of interest. That's ref- referenced in the SOPs. And you know, he previously, Jeff Parker had previously indicated that that was still relevant and to go ahead and use that, but I want to make sure of that again. And so anyway, that's kind of the long and short of that. These SOPs are basically identical to the ones that I've updated for HPC. Planning commission has not had SOPs previously adopted ones. So I've taken the planning commission operating procedures and adapted those pretty much just changed where it said HPC to planning commission. Because both of you all are quasi judicial. And so you know, you have some, some similarities. I also included some information on electronic meetings or, or remote meetings, both ones like this that were, you know, it's the entire meeting is being done remotely. And for when we do have in-person meetings, if there are a couple of commissioners, one or two that can't make it and need to, to come in by, say, speakerphone, or I have them on a zoom on my laptop and it's being used almost like a speakerphone so that people can hear them, but they wouldn't necessarily be able to see them. And some, I put some parameters into that. Hopefully we can cap. And some, I put some parameters into that. Hopefully, uh, we can capture a little bit of what we've learned, uh, from, from doing these. So anyway, I am at your pleasure as far as how much time you want to spend tonight. Uh, how much discussion you want to do, if you want to, um. Go through them, if you want to, uh, I have asked HPC to send me. Each individual commissioner, send me directly their comments about three weeks after their last meeting. Uh, so then on the next meeting, I can compile all the comments and edits and everything. And then we have. You know, some things to discuss as far as changes or, um. You know, things like that additions, that kind of thing. If you want to do that, I'm. Happy to, to facilitate that. So just let me know how you want to handle it.
Well, you know, I think, uh, this is a perfect meeting since we have such a small agenda. To discuss it if people have things they already see, like I know Mike before had some stuff when we. We postponed it the last time. I have a few things and we could. Do one round. We don't have to go line by line.
Okay.
But you know, because it's really, you know, it's a planning commission is the ownership of this document and. And so it's our responsibility and if we can lighten your load by sort of giving our feedback now rather than you having to. You know, assimilate seven or 10 emails that that might be helpful just to, you know, and then we can still. Have a second round to go over it again. So Mike, I saw he had his hand up, so I'll let him go.
Okay, thanks. Just a couple of quick comments. On section two B. It says the regular meeting should be on first Wednesday of the month. This should be the second. And then under the responsibility.
Just a second, let me find that section two.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, article, article two? No.
Section two, annual regular special meetings, page four.
Oh, page four, I'm, okay.
Yeah, item B. Regular meetings shall be held on the first Wednesday. Yep.
Second, thank you.
Um, and then to put more work on the chairperson. I think it might be nice to have the chair responsible for, um. A, a cell phone distribution list in case a meeting is canceled or is. You know, if Zoom is down or I remember that one time that was canceled because of a flood warning. And it's just a good way to communicate, I think. And I, I also think the opening speech for the chairperson, if we could document that on this section, that would be great.
Hey, where are you, Mike?
I'm all over the place, just.
Okay, okay, just comments. Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, I guess if section one chairperson, that would be those two things. Uh, three, another one actually. So some sort of. Instant communication opportunity, if there's a cancellation of the meeting. Um, the opening speech. And then I think it would be nice if the chairperson was, um. One of the roles was to introduce new members. And you know, some sort of orientation. And just a quick question, can the chairperson make a motion?
Um, you know, that's something that, um. According to Robert's rules of order, if we're following it strictly. If the, the chair wants to make a motion, they need to. Step down as chair and let someone else chair the meeting. It's sort of cumbersome.
Yeah.
And, and that's sort of why I, you know, someone advised me of that a few years ago and that's why I stopped making motions and.
Sure.
And I think that's something worth talking about a little bit because. For years, chairs have made motions at all boards and commissions and. We don't have to follow. Robert's rules of order if you have something in your SOPs that, that speaks to. A particular issue. So we could put in here. That all officers are allowed to make motions. And then, you know, that resolves it.
Tip? You have a comment?
The, the thing is that we don't follow Robert's rules as best I understand. I'm, I've been in, you know, school, we do that a lot. And for example, Robert's rules, um, uh, according to my understanding, the chair doesn't vote unless there's a tie. And we don't follow that already. So I think that the Robert's rules, you know, uh, we do, we kind of make them the way we want. Um, but we're not following them strictly anyway. So we've already abrogated that. So. My view would be that the chair should be able to make a motion. I think that's fine.
Other, did you have other stuff, Mikey? We're sort of had the.
Yes, just two, two more real quick. Um, on the electronic communication part of the SOP. I think it'd be nice if applicants were encouraged to be on video. I don't know if we can make it mandatory, but highly encouraged or whatever. I, I, I really think that's important. And then I, I read through this whole thing and there's no mention of any kind of compensation for us. And I, I'm sure that's a typo.
No, we, we just haven't raised our salary in fifty years at all.
Mike, you haven't been getting paid? We have.
Yeah, sorry how you missed those.
Okay, that's all I got.
Yep.
Um, I'm sure that we probably are getting a hundred percent salary increase for next year. So, you know, there's only that. Uh, Michelle, one of the things and Alan that has been a little controversial in the past. And I have some strong feelings about it and I've looked through this and I don't see it addressed. And I don't mean to open a can of worms, but if we're talking about operating procedures, it seems to me, maybe it should be included. Is that in the past, the city of a tur- a city attorney has said, and let me give an example. That let's say that there is something, um, that comes before planning that. Um, I might be implicated in. Let's say that there is a development next door to me. And so I would recuse myself from that, and I think that's right. The city attorney in the past has said, for example, that. I is a, a recused, uh, planning commissioner should not come to the meetings of the planning about that. I can kind of understand that, but that I also should not speak about that to the city council. And this I disagree with. And, um, I think that everybody, every citizen has the right to weigh in. Somehow on a decision. And here I would, I wish that we would clarify this in these operating procedures. If something is being, uh, is, has an impact on me next door, I wouldn't presume to weigh in on the, on it as a, as a planning commissioner. But I think that I should be able to weigh on, in on it one time as a citizen. And to serve on the planning commission and be told that you're not allowed to talk about that issue to the city council. To me is punitive and it also abrogates, I think, my rights as a citizen of the community. And so I think that that, I, so again, I know the city council, um, the city lawyer has a. Attorney has a different view, at least he's expressed a different view in the past. But it's not in the, these operating, uh, procedures best I can see. But I think that that right of us as citizens, otherwise it's, I don't, you know, I think it's really unfair to the people serving on the planning commission. That they're not allowed to speak, um, but you know, like, uh, you see what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, you know, I think it's, it's clear that. Um, we can't, if we're recused, we can't. Try to, um. Lobby our commission, but I, I agree with you that that's something that we can at least. Ask the question. All they can do is slap us down and say no, but I, I, I agree. I mean, I think if, if, um. Yeah, you know, I, I agree. I think it's, you know, talking before council and I tried it once and got slapped down and embarrassed and. But.
I remember, I remember, but I don't think you should have been embarrassed. I think that's your right as a citizen.
Well, that case, I, it was a little more complicated because I had spoken at the commission meeting.
Oh, okay.
You know, so I was wrong for sure in that case.
Okay.
And, and you know, the city attorney said, well. What are you? Are you a commissioner or are you a citizen? You know, you can't be both in this case. And I said, okay, you're right. David, you want to weigh in on this?
Well. Uh, what is the basis of the legal opinion? I mean, uh. I, I quite agree with the two of you. Um, it seems straightforward. Uh, but the, the, the legal opinion must have some basis and. Are we suggesting that if we put it in our standard operating procedures that that. Governs rather than, I don't know, some strange thing in Colorado state law or something?
I, I don't believe that that would be the case, but this, I think if we could put something in the SOPs, when the attorney reviews it. Then he'll ha- he'll need to address that. If he has a problem with it. Then that'll be one of the things that he highlights and comes back and says, and, and I can ask him the question, you know, what's the basis for this? Um, because certainly it's one thing to say. You can't speak at a planning commission meeting because. That's kind of peer to peer, but it would not be the same speaking from somebody that's on planning commission. You know, that goes to a council meeting, um, because that's not peer to peer, um, so.
As long as we've recused and not been part of the process.
Yes, so that's specific to when recusal.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Carrie, it looks like Carrie has a question on this too.
I, yeah, I was reading about the pre-judging also article eight on pre-judging. And it says that if you've expressed an opinion before the hearing is held or completed. You have to recuse for prejudgment. So if you had even gone to a public meeting about something that might not be adjacent to you, but in your neighborhood. If you even went to that meeting and expressed any opinion, you'd have to recuse yourself based on that.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, I'm, I think that's how the policy always has been. That once you've weighed in, you can't be.
Can be impartial.
You, you're not, you're prejudiced and.
So I'm just from my. Understanding. So when you have it underlined and highlighted, is that for the lawyer to see? To answer that question?
Yeah, when, like we're on this page, on page ten, where I have useful recusal for prejudgment, question mark. That was not in the, the SOPs, the, the current SOPs that I had for HPC about, you know. Well, what do you do if you've? You know, basically prejudged. Um, and so that was the question that I needed to ask the attorney. And either draft some language for, or see if he wanted to draft some language and just confirm for me that that would be the way to cure that. Um, I think it is. Um, so anyway, that, yeah, that's, the things that I've highlighted are things that. I have questions about myself, um, and need to follow up on.
Yeah, and I actually think that prejudging is really. Extremely important to convey our objectivity and the fact that we're going through a process. Like, you know, I, I think during. Testimony from applicants, we have to be very careful. To say thank you. And not say that's great or all that's an awesome, awesome presentation. We need to just be really neutral and get all the facts and listen to all the applicants. I mean, all the testimony from the community. Before we start expressing our opinion. I think it's, it really makes it, you know, it's like a judge in a trial. You know, after a. Testimony from the district attorney doesn't say, wow, that was a great presentation you did. And even if it was, you, we have to stay neutral until we get to our. We, we've closed the hearing to the public and we're, we're deliberating because that, that way we've gotten all the facts and then we're. We're making our judgment. So I like that section. I think, you know, it's, it's, you know, there are times where. I have to bite my tongue when I've almost. Made a statement and. You know, you know, it comes up all. All the time, you know, since we lived in the community so much, people, you know, all of us have been on the commission so long. People know we're on the commission and they'll. They'll call up or they'll see you walking and say, oh, what do you think about X, Y, or Z? And it's just. Like. I don't even know about that. I won't talk about it. Have a good day.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's important because and it, and it's hard, it's a hard thing. Because there may be something that you don't even know that's going to come before planning commission and some, you know, some neighbor has said. What do you think about, you know, so and so, I hear they're going to do X, Y, and Z. And you're like, gosh, oh, gosh, I, you know, I don't like that or whatever. And then it becomes a planning commission item. You have to realize that, you know, you've, you've already made a statement. And, um, there may be other ways to cure that. You may be able just to talk about it at the meeting. And say, you know, I heard about this six months ago. It wasn't a planning commission item. I expressed some concern to my neighbor, but now I've seen, you know, now I'm looking at the entire application and I can be. Fair in, you know, and, and not, not prejudge it. And then that just brings the, the item forward.
Yeah. Well, I have a, a couple of things that, um. Let's see the. On page one, section nine. Where we say written notice of intent to resign should be sent city clerk and chairperson at least one month before the termination date. I think the at least one month. Is probably unnecessary. You know, it's, it's nice if you can, but. Um, probably we don't need that. And I guess the one that really has, gives me the most heartburn is on page three. Where we're talking about, um, the. Public meetings. And, um, I, item A says all meetings of two or more members. And, um. I think. It, as far as obviously core, um, um, quasi judicial things. We shouldn't discuss even one-on-one, but I think policy. And philosophy, I think that's perfectly fair. For two commissioners or two counselors to get together and just talk about stuff. It's when you have three together. On a board, commission or council, that it's a meeting. So I, I really think that should be three. And you know, maybe this was tailored to when the, um. HPC only had four members and a forum was two or something, but.
No, actually that is. What we've been advised sunshine law states. It's two or more.
Who, who is, who has advised you that?
The city attorney.
Well.
Yeah, I can have a look at it again.
Yeah, I, I, and I'll, I'll ask him myself too, because I think that's, that's, you know. You know, if, if I'm basically. Sitting and having a cup of coffee with Mike and, you know, and saying, wow, you know. Um. Our planning code is just really. It's great except this one section. What do you think? Do you think we need to have another round of updates or something? It, it seems to me that. You know, two, two individuals should be able to have a discussion. And I know that's how business is done on council and has been for decades where. People do talk.
Well, maybe it's supposed to say more than two, not two or more.
Yeah, okay, well.
So let, let me check with him on that.
Yeah. And just, uh.
Sure.
Seven, where we're talking about, um. The process, you know, item five, close public hearing. No further discussion from applicant or public will be accepted. I used to say that, you know, I'd say the public hearing is closed after we had all the. Um, public comment. And then one time Jeff corrected me and say, well, really, you know, the public hearing is still going on. It's just the public comment section of the public hearing is. So.
Yeah, I can make that change. Yeah.
So any other? Things that this, uh, Gloria?
Um, thanks. I'm going back to page ten, article nine, that ex parte communication. I, I think, think it's, it could be more specific. The way I interpreted is if somebody's had an ex parte. Communication, they should disclose the nature of the communication during the hearing. But because this is also in the recusal section. It, is that up, up for the discretion of the planning commission, whether they should recuse themselves or. If you've had ex parte communication, you should recuse yourself. It, it seems like it's up, uh, there's some discretion there by someone and I don't know.
Yeah, I think, I think it is because. You can, you know, we've been told that you can cure an ex parte. Conversation, um, or, you know, conflict by stating it, talking about what. Conversation or, you know, conflict by stating it, talking about what was discussed. And, you know, if if all the information is either in the packet. Or you can share any information that maybe in that discussion you got. You know, with the commission, that's a way to cure it. It's, I mean, the best thing is not to have them, you know, I mean, that's, that's the. The best way to handle it is just tell people I am, I cannot talk to you about this. But if you get, you know, cornered in a safe way and somebody will not let you alone and they keep saying things that you're hearing. You know, then you probably should at least. To be on the safe side, talk about that.
Yeah, and right now it's in the age of social media. And email. You know, sometimes you get bombarded by, you know, someone sends you something and you're halfway through it before you realize and. And the cure there is just to. Have it be part of the submittal. At the planning commission meeting and, you know, that's disclosing it, because I, I think we had one applicant once a few years ago that was emailing. Anybody who could find the email, email address for and.
Yeah.
It got pretty brutal, but that was, you know, if 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 everybody that gotten an email from him, we wouldn't have had a quorum, so. That was.
Yeah, you could even send it to staff and have us put it in the packet, you know, as public comment.
Yeah, tip, you had it.
So I think that one of the thing, one of the things here is that you, for the sort of sunshine notion. That even if you haven't had a conversation, there are also times when you might have a very close relationship with somebody. And you have to, I think it's incumbent on you to say that and say, this person is a colleague of my Colorado Colorado college. And we work together closely. In this case, I think I'm, I I'm able to be impartial. But then it'd also be that you might say realistically, I I should sit this one out. And I think that that we all have those in the small community. The main thing is to be honest about that. And I also wanted to cycle back, Michelle, a little bit to what Alan was talking about before. When we were talking about the two or the two or up, you know, like two or two or more. And one thing I I don't, I wouldn't want to get lost is that. I think that the, we want to be really clear about the quasi judicial decisions again and other decisions. I mean, the thing is that of, it it's actually healthy for for us to be thinking about. Things like more generally about transportation or other challenges that we have. And I, I think that's fine to talk about. The thing that is. Hard to talk that we shouldn't be talking about are things that are coming to us in a quasi judicial way. So the number part, I don't need, like, I think if, you know, like, a couple of people are sitting over a beer and they're saying, oh, what are we gonna do about transportation here, whatever? To me, that seems perfectly fine. I just think that we need to be very clear. I think we should be really clear dissociating that. And I think that sometimes we've gotten mixed messages from not you, but from the administration. About like, don't talk about anything, that's just unrealistic and it's actually unproductive for a community. Where we have to be in touch with, you know, thinking about these issues.
Yeah.
Well, I definitely think there's a big difference between. Discussing just community matters that that the planning commission mayor, you know, well. Like, transportation, you all don't regularly. Discuss as policymakers or policy recommenders. Transportation and but you could certainly, because you're all live in the community, and if you want to sit with with other commissioners, friends, whatever. And talk about those issues, you know, why don't we have scooters instead of just electronic bikes, you know, or whatever? That's, that's a completely different thing. Quasi, yeah, the quasi judicial. I think where the kind of the gray area comes in is anything. That you're gonna take action on or make a recommendation on that you should be talking about in a public meeting. You know, as a body. I think the intent is that you should not be talking about that. You know, offline.
And I would even go a little further. It's not even talking about it, not to re resurrect too much history. But let's just say that I recall whatever twelve or fourteen years ago where. People in our neighborhood would were being told, you can't talk to the city council, blah, blah, or the mayor about an issue. And the mayor and mayor and people in the city council and the historic preservation board were at the other side's place having parties. And drinking. I don't know whether they talked about the the particular case or not, but it was improper. For them to be carousing together. You know, it when there's a big decision to be made. So I would say it's even beyond talking about the thing. It's a sense of a propriety propriety, if you see what I mean. And I don't know if there's a way to get that into wording, but I think. Actually is true.
Well, there's the appearance and then there's the actual legal definition. And I don't think. I don't think that we can necessarily regulate the appearance. That's something that I think people. With their own sense of 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 propriety. Need to, you know, decide for themselves, but there, then there's the hard line of. You know, this may be squishy, but at this point it becomes not squishy and you can't. You can't be, you can't do this.
Yeah, you know. If you look at that wording, it says. All meetings. Any special meetings at which public business is discussed. And when does it become public? I mean, I think we all know quasi judicial. You just don't discuss outside of the meeting, but. You know, if I happen to bump into tip and. And, you know, there are cars everywhere and we think, God, what's wrong with our parking requirements? Maybe we need to. Tweak the code or have some different rules because people are just parking all over. You know, it's public business, but it's not really. You know, it's it's just sort of general. You know.
Right.
Yeah, Julia, yeah, I see your hand.
I I think so typically sunshine law, it does say two or more, and I do understand Alan's point that you sometimes do have the. To the allowance for the two sunshine law is usually two or more people in a gathering. That's just the standard language. I also think that we all are wise enough and well versed enough to know when we are doing something. That we've been advised against that we know may be disingenuous or underhanded. Before we come into a quasi judicial setting. So I don't know that. I don't know that we can detail all of this in the bylaws or SOPs because I I think we all know where that. There may be a gray area and we know which side of that gray area is the right side before we go into a public meeting.
Okay, what I might do just in my submittal to. You know, for the next round, I'll just list off a few different scenarios.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, you know, because some things, you know, it's just a question of what what is regarded as public business. How far does it go? Like, you know, if I see tip and I say, wow, you know, city charter, we need to just trash it and start over. Is that public business? Probably not, but. It gets into more.
But if you sit down and draft a new one together.
Or if it's on a dock, or if it's on a docket for coming up at public business.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, okay.
So if I had a conflict of interest, do I have to disclose what that conflict is?
Well, if you're recusing yourself, you know, technically. There, there's a limited. Venue of. What is really bona fide for recusal? Because, you know, just because somebody's next door to you, the, you know, like tip was was using that example. Doesn't mean that you can't sit on the item and you automatically should recuse yourself. Or just because you know the person and it's making you uncomfortable and you want to recuse yourself. But if there's no financial interest, you haven't prejudged. You know, you don't have, it's not something where, you know, you're part of the process, you're, you know. Then you really shouldn't be recusing yourself, because we could get to a point where everybody decides. This makes them uncomfortable, so they'd just rather recuse themselves. And then we don't have a quorum. So you do have to, or you should. Note. Why? You don't necessarily have to go into great detail. You could say, you know. I have a business arrangement or. You know, I have a financial interest or in the case of. I live next door, I know a lot about this project and I'm just not comfortable that I can be. Impartial.
Okay.
Yeah, and and if it's an awkward thing and you just don't want to be there, you can always just not show up to meeting.
I'm sick.
I have a cold tonight.
That's right. For the lucky alt alternate.
Yeah, so. On page ten C. I I think that. Probably needs some work. It's just, it's sort of. Confusing to me. And that's the one where, you know. That, you know, the. If you're not. If you're recusing. You can't influence and. And that's where we, you know, we just have to be really careful. And the wording there, I've read it a few times and. I think it might need some work or.
Yeah, this was actually taken from a recent. A question that we had come up and from the attorney's response. Doesn't mean that it can't be better clarified, but basically he determined that. If, say you were employed. By an applicant and part of that application had. Say a letter that you had done or you were serving as a contractor or like David as, you know, the architect. And and, you know, you. It was part of the application, the materials that you provided in your professional capacity. As long as you didn't then put a letter in saying, dear commissioners. This needs to be approved because I've drawn it and I am one of your fellow commissioners. I'm I'm going way overboard, but you. You get the idea. If it's just in your professional capacity and it's not, doesn't include an evaluation of why you see. The commission needs to vote the way you want them to and you've recused yourself, that's. That professional. Capacity is not part of. The attempt to influence if it's just provided factual, you know, factual information for the application. That's really what that's talking about.
I guess the the vagueness is if. If you work with an applicant. And you provide. Some factual data that's going to be testimony. Or part of the submission by the applicant and your name is associated with that work. I mean, if you do it and your name isn't there. That's one thing, but if your name is there, it seems to me that then you are. Your. Even if you recuse, the fact that your name is on it is. Your name as a commissioner or you are trying to, you are actually in fact influencing. The. Deliberation.
Well, and that, you know, I think that can be argued. And certainly, you know, if we had a dearth of. People waiting in the wings, trying to get on boards and commissions. That, you know, we might be able to take a much harder line and not have to even have these discussions. But. In instances where we have people that are in professional trades that are serving on commissions. And we have to tell them, well, you can't do, you can't work locally anymore because on on any project that might come before the commission. That that is, your people are gonna have to resign because then they can't operate their business.
Sure, but what if, what if they do the work and give the technical information and. I mean, they ha- if if they have to put their stamp on it. I guess, I guess that's one for Jeff, or if if that's, if he says that's fine, he says it's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I'll have him look at the wording again to make sure, but that's, that's the conclusion that was reached. When we had the discussion recently is that, you know, if it's just factual information. And it's not something where they're trying to. Formulate a persuasive argument, I guess you could say. Then that's not influencing.
Okay. Any other thoughts right now?
One more real quick. Yes.
Yep.
On page three on alternates. I I I think it would be nice to encourage alternates to attend these meetings. And then the last sentence that says the chair sell shall seat the most senior alternate member. I think if the chair was on the spot, I don't know how. He or she could pick out the most senior member. Maybe we can just have the, you know, the. The member of the chair's choice, something like that. Plus. You know, if you. If you're an alternate for two years, but you don't show up, it, you're not involved in someone else's been around for six months. That's. Constantly going to meetings and more knowledgeable, I think that person is more valuable. So I don't I don't know why the most senior alternate member needs to be chosen.
Well, it's basically because there was some mechanism for not just. Making it seem like somebody was being favorite, favorite, you know, favored. You know, you don't want to have the chair being accused of, well, he sits him every time because I never get sat. Why is that? You know, that kind of thing. So it usually is not an issue. This gives them some. You know, some leeway, because if that alternate says, I haven't been here in six months, this guy sat last week. If he wants to sit again. You know, let him.
Okay.
Yeah, decades ago, when I was first on the commission and I was an alternate. I think we had two alternates. And we would just take turns. And at that time, we always had a full, you know, it was, it was. Usually maybe one opening to be seated and we would just both show up and. I do it one time, she do it the next time and we went back and forth and we did that for about a year and it. You know, to me, that that would be most fair, but I agree with Mike's comment that. If someone's showing up for all the meetings and someone never shows up. Some favoritism or some. You know, choice of the person who's always there might be more in order.
Right.
Tip. I I I guess that I like that. I'm glad you brought this up. I I kind of like the idea of it rotating around. Even if someone doesn't come all the time, the thing is that they need the experience, they need to develop expertise. Another thing is that you get more involved and and that and invested in the, so you haven't come for six months and then you come and then you're 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 seated. Then you might think, oh, yeah, you know, I should come more often and. Good, so I think I I would probably scratch the senior stuff and say. That there should be an attempt to rotate around so that everybody gets to participate. I mean, if someone's incompetent, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be an alternate anyway. So we should, the presumption should be they're all competent and that we want them all in invested in the in the job.
Okay. Yeah, I I I mean, I liked it when I was there. I was always excited when. I showed up and the other alternate didn't show up because then I knew I had a better shot, but.
We could say she'll seat alternate members on a rotating basis. As feasible.
Yeah, that's good. That works for me. Only other area that I'm wondering about is. The late submittals policy. And. You know, I I hate to be too hardcore on it, but it's when people work. Have a day job. And they get something the day of, I just think it's wrong. I just, I think there has to be at least. At least a. Twenty-four, if not forty-eight hours to. To put that into your. You know, to to do due diligence if it's something substantive.
Okay, so basically this says that the commission won't take. Information after the submittal deadline as determined by planning staff. So that's, that's, you know, a couple of months before. Before the meeting and then it says. Or after the meeting packet has been published and distributed to the commission. If such information changes or amendments are deemed important to the consideration of the request. The commission may elect to postpone the application to a specified regularly scheduled or special meeting, so. That if somebody walks in with information. Or sends it to staff and staff, you know, sends it on or or whatever, you have the leeway to say. I'm sorry, this this came in too late, we we can't review it, but you also have the leeway to look at it and say. Oh, this makes sense now. Now I understand. But you also have the leeway to look at it and say, oh, this makes sense now. Now I understand. You know, see, you have the, the ability to choose which way to go based on the information and the, you know, critical nature of it or not.
Yeah.
There's more flexibility.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, there, there's, um, a lot of pressure gets put on the commission. When someone says, you know, I, I gotta get this going before the snow flies, you know, I, my bulldozer is going to be repossessed if I don't do this in the next thirty days. And I think it's unfair to the process. It's unfair also to citizens who might show up at the meeting when the packet is submitted on a Friday night and eleventh hour substantive information shows up in the commissioner's inbox on a Tuesday night or something. So I'm, I'm sort of really concerned about that, Julia.
I have been a staunch advocate for receiving things early, but I will say in staff's defense beyond a variance or a zoning change, they are only required to produce documents twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. So I, I like what Michelle just said about, um, if it's something that may, I don't want to use it, may not be substantive or, um, have the gravity to change our decision. If it comes in twenty-four hours before, then I, then we have, then the commission has the ability to say, this really wasn't going to sway me either way because they are getting the packets to us. I don't, is it forty? I, very much in advance, out of consideration. Yeah. So I, I like that the, the commission can decide together how to move forward with something that is a late submittal. That is the, on the onus of the applicant.
Okay.
Tip. Well, we actually did this not too long ago that we postponed something. And, um, I wonder, I, I, I thought that that was fine. I mean, of course you're going to feel some kind of pressure here or there. Um, it's not just an applicant. It's also that we respond to the planners and we respect the planners. And when they put a huge amount of work in it, you know, like that's, it's hard to, I, that was hard. I, I, I supported and I spoke in favor of postponing, but I felt badly about it in terms of the work that our planners did about that. But in my judgment, that was, I thought at that moment, the right thing to do. One of the things that we might keep in mind, so there is, um, you know, as Julia is saying, there's the, the, and as Michelle, it is in there that we can postpone. Maybe one of the things that we could be a little bit more attentive to is that if anybody feels that something um, that so substantive hasn't come in enough time to really be able to judge and all that, that we move the item up. We feel more free to move the item up in the agenda so we can get that over with quicker so that we're not also feeling that there are all these people sitting there forever and ever, ever in the audience, waiting to know whether it's going to come up. And then we're going to, then we feel pressure also, like they've been here for two hours and now we're not going to hear it. So maybe, you know, we, we could be a little bit more attentive and, and support each other in rearranging the agenda for that reason.
Yeah, I just, I just think that, and, and believe me, when we have things that are coming in, I mean, there's a, a lot of times in a staff report, there are, is something like, you know, this needs to be clarified, that kind of thing. When it's, when there's stuff that's just missing, um, you know, we will inform, usually we can get the applicant to agree to postpone or that we just tell them, this is not going to fly. It's not complete. Uh, you, you know, the planning commission is going to postpone it. I'm not doing a staff report. I'm doing a memo. You know, that kind of thing, but on things where, um, you know, it's something that comes in, either I didn't, you know, we didn't anticipate it and it's something that additional that they thought, you know, would be good for the commission to have, or it's just an item of clarification. I would hate to just off, you know, off the top preclude you all from having the flexibility of saying, that's fine, you know, that this, this actually clarifies and it's easy to understand. It's not a huge change, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah, I just, you know, I stated my opinion and, um, I've gotten a lot of feedback, a lot of blowback when things aren't complete and citizens, because they're part of, they're stakeholders too. It's not just the commission and staff and the applicant. We also have our community and, and we have to be mindful of perception. And oh, why are we doing all this? You know, they didn't, when I went to submit my stuff, if I didn't have every T crossed, I did, I had to wait. Why did this person get to do a major development and they didn't even have X, Y, and Z? And so I think that's where we just have to be careful. We really have to be mindful of perception and fairness.
Right.
So, um, if there's no more comments, I guess.
Gloria's got her hand up.
Oh, oh, great. Sorry.
I, I, that's okay. Hey, going back to, um, page three on alternates. No, I, I think a number of alternates, um, don't know, well, there's no expectations for attendance. You know, we're not required to attend, say, three out of the, uh, twelve meetings. And I don't see anything that actually requires or expects regular members to do so. So maybe some, something like that would be helpful or also to let alternates know in advance when there's not going to be uh, a quorum present of regular members. So they would have an opportunity to, you know, prepare, uh, read the packet and so forth. So I think right, right now, if, if Michelle doesn't call you and say, can, can you come? Um, I think people wouldn't know that they're needed. So if the lo- long-winded wa- way of saying, I, I think rotating al- alternates would, would be a good idea and, um, and maybe requiring a minimum number of me- meetings, just so, um, alternates can, can keep up with the pace of what's going on.
Yeah, I guess Gloria, like you showed up tonight. Were you anticipating that someone was not going to be here or did you just?
No, I, I, I like to, to attend when I'm available on, on, on the regular meetings, just because it's a, it's a learning experience for me.
Yeah, okay.
You're a star Gloria.
Yeah, well, it's good and so.
I think, you know, part of, part of the reason that the alternates may not know that they're encouraged to attend meetings is because we haven't had SOPs. And so once we have a set where everybody will get a copy when they volunteer for the, for the commission, um, then that will, hopefully they'll actually read them and that will help them understand that, you know, they're encouraged to come and participate, even if they're not sat. Um, if we could certainly look at requiring a minimum attendance, I, you know, it's one of those things that could be a great thing, or it could actually lose you some alternates.
Well, that's true. And, you know, maybe it could just be in some, some type of orientation to the planning commission also.
Yeah, I'd like the idea though of having alternates attend and, um, you know, we're, it, I guess it just ebbs and flows with people's interest, but it's, it's like, I think everybody here, when they're alternate showed up almost all the time. So.
One of the things that we could do, we were talking just a minute ago about how we want, um, you know, so many days, uh, to prepare and all that kind of stuff. I mean, one thing that you could do is to say, the normal expectation is for planning commissioners, if they are going to miss a meeting, to let the staff know within twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours or something like that. And that that gives the planet, planning staff the opportunity to contact the replacement to come. Um, so that, uh, you know, you could say like, under normal circumstances, we know that you might be struck ill in five sec- five minutes before that can happen, but we probably, we commissioners could be more responsible and all that to let the planners know in advance so that they could contact people to replace us.
Yeah, what I would suggest, maybe have the, have them contact the chair. And because, you know, it's, the staff has enough work to do without having to call roll and that. And that's probably our responsibility as a board and I, as chair, I don't mind. I've done that in the past where I've known someone's gone. I, I've contacted other commissioners, you know, the alternates to say, can you come? So, you know, I wouldn't mind putting, you know, putting it in there that, uh, put that responsibility on the chair.
I can note that, or maybe contact both the chair and staff. That way, if you're out of town or there's something going on, yeah, more than one person knows.
Yeah.
Great.
Totally guilty, but sometimes there are totally guilty about the twenty-four hour thing. But I, I think notifying everyone, because there are some times that you're on, stuck on a conference call.
Yeah.
Until nine hundred o'clock. And I call the last minute. I do, I ping Michelle the last minute. Sorry, guilty.
It's all right. We know how to scramble.
Mike, Mike.
Last comment, um, on absences, should we put in some sort of, uh, like three unexcused absences is, is something?
Wasn't that in the?
I think that's in the actual code, um, and we could certainly restate it, but let's look here.
Are you sure? Or used to be, maybe it got taken out. I know it wasn't.
I remember seeing this somewhere, but it's on page one or it's not on page one, I should say.
Terms. Yeah, you know, um, it may not be in the code anymore because it used to be. Oh no, planning, the planning commission section is in here. I just didn't re, um, retitle that page. Okay, nevermind. The excerpts section that's attached to the, to the SOPs, I did put the planning commission code section in. I just forgot to title the, retitle the, the first page. So, yay, um, well, I'll tell you what, let me just make a note that, um, three unexcused absences. And I'll get the wording that, that's kind of been standard and we'll, we'll make it, we'll put it in here.
Yeah, yeah, it used to be there. It must have, we did get all this rewritten a couple of years ago, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I can definitely, that's a good idea.
One of the other interesting things they took out was the, um, being a registered elector for boards, which I thought was amazing.
Yeah, it got, it got very confusing because what it actually said is that it, you have to qualify to be an elector. Not that you have to be registered, but people read it and they thought it meant that you had to register to vote to be able to volunteer on a board or commission and that's not what it's.
But you had to be a citizen of Manitou Springs.
That's right. You had to be eligible to, to, um, register to vote.
Yeah. And that's gone now. That's no longer a requirement.
Really?
Yeah, at least for the boards. I don't know about the commissions, but there are people that aren't citizens that are on boards. And that may be just, uh, you know, uh, I don't know, but that, that was taken out when it was redone last year.
Yeah, you have to be a resident of the city.
Yeah. Yeah, it used to be, you had to be a citizen, but, um, any more things right now? I mean, we can still all submit our thoughts. I think this has been really good. Glad we really have this conversation this way.
Yeah, I'm, I am too. I'm glad, I'm glad for all the notes.
I learned so much from hearing everybody else's thoughts.
Absolutely. So what I'll do is I'll incorporate the comments. And if it, a- a- as Alan said, if any, if you, you know, wake up a week from now and go, oh, I should have said this. Because we all know we're going to be thinking about nothing else but this. Um, you know, send me an email. Just make sure it just comes to me and not to everybody else. And then I'll gather any additional comments and then have this in your packet for next meeting. Uh, for, you know, more discussion or adoption or, you know, however you want to handle it.
Okay. Well, I guess we, um, at this point, we should move on to item five. This is a plan Manitou update.
And I'm going to bring, uh, senior planner Karen Birch told over because Karen is, this is her presentation.
Hello, everybody. How's this sounding out?
I sound good.
Good.
Do I need you in my kitchen? So, um, yeah, thanks for including this on the agenda, um, Michelle. So, um, yeah, our annual plan Manitou progress report, this is our fourth, actually. Um, we adopted the plan about four years ago. And so usually, um, we provide this report to a joint session of council and, and commission, which is a really good way of doing this. Um, this year, things kind of came up quickly and our city administrator wanted to have the report for the council budget retreat in early October. So, um, we, we did this separately. And I'll just note that in, in this report that I provided, there are some items that are underlined. Those are some additions that I made um, since the council report. There were a few actions that I had inadvertently omitted. So, um, yeah, I'll, I'll just go through this briefly, um, and, you know, happy to entertain questions at any point, um, you want to jump in. And so, um, a few of you, I mean, well, Alan, Alan, um, participated in the citizens advisory committee to develop this plan. And at that time, we, we did commit to this annual update and, um, wanted to, um, really maintain, in large part, maintain the document as a living plan. And so we, we, we anticipated we would have some occasional amendments to the plan, either from, from citizens or developers or, um, staff, and, and that hasn't happened yet, but, but that could still happen, could have, um, potentially a minor amendment to the plan. And so, um, basically provided a pie chart on the front of the report. Um, we've made some really good progress. There's only about ten percent of our actions that we haven't really made any, any headway on. Of thirty-two percent of our actions are totally done. Um, other actions, we kind of revisit. They're, they're always continually updated. And so I did, um, provide a summary of all the completed actions on the plan Manitou website. And I'll post this report on there as well and then, um, send out an update to our, our mailing list. So folks can, folks from the public can see this. And so I think I'll just, um, go through these areas with, with a few highlights. We have about eleven or twelve chapters in our plan, but we condensed them into six areas, just kind of for ease of digesting all this information. And so I'll just start with resiliency. We, um, also have a hazard mitigation plan. We're actually going to update that plan next year. We have a grant for that. And that plan carries over to our master plan. Um, and so this is a report of those actions related to resiliency in our master plan. We've actually had quite a bit of activity this year. Some of it, um, came up spontaneously. Um, a, a key, a key action is that with the, the, the completion of the public works department, we, we can have our emergency command in that facility as, as needed. Another activity was that our fire chief clarified that he thinks our wildfire mitigation priority should be our city reservoir. And so we did some, um, hosted a regional meeting to talk about that. And as part of that, we really want to build our relationships with regional mitigation professionals. And so we're on our way to do that. So that was really great. And then we do have a, we have a grant to do some mitigation at our reservoir, sixty-five acres of mitigation. And that's a big deal. Um, we're kind of dipping our toes into, uh, more widespread wildfire mitigation. So I think there'll be a lot of learning to be done with that. We still have, we, we've done a lot. Um, we still have some important actions to, to, um, move forward with in resiliency, particularly for flooding and protection of our downtown businesses and, and residences. But a lot of effort updating our communications this year as well. And so next for housing, um, about the time our plan was adopted, our housing advisory board was created. And so, um, they are a very active board and we had a pretty, um, I would say, um, deep home list of actions for housing. And they have kind of delved into most of them. Um, they've been successful in forming partnerships and partnered with Brothers redevelopment for energy efficiency programs and then have, um, taken the angle of updating a number of policies to, um, make sure our housing is, uh, safe and sustainable. And that we, um, are tracking, uh, rentals. What what's been challenging, I think, for the board is, um, trying to actually create more affordable housing units. And I think, um, that's due to really the the high level of capacity that's needed to do that, um, and the fact that we don't have a lot of great sites. Um, we compete with few sites, um, we have really, we talk about, um, how we're going to use them quite a bit. There's a lot of public discussion to sort those out. So, so that's been challenging. Um, you know, I think the board will continue to look for creative ways to do this and, um, and planning will certainly support them in that. Transportation and mobility. So this is an area where we've had a lot of activity in the last few years. We did the transportation mobility master plan. And a lot of staff capacity has been dedicated to this, um, this area. Um, with our, uh, city engineer, um, managing numerous projects. And also our deputy city administrator has been very involved in this topic. Um, what surprised me with this section is that our actions were so consistent with things that we've actually been doing, even though we did this plan five years ago. Um, so really, most of these things, um, are completed or underway. Um, some highlights I would say are, um, the technology, the real time parking signs and, um, really more, um, creative thinking around how to provide parking, particularly to support the office, the shuttle at Hiawatha Gardens. And what I what I also noticed was that in our plan, we have a list of long term actions. And those are ideas that came up in in the planning process that like maybe weren't priorities, but we wanted to kind of memorialize them. And actually, um, a lot of those actions for transportation have been done too. So lots of activity. For economic vitality, I would say, um, really lots of activity around, um, creative ways of minimizing the impact of COVID on some of our businesses. And then also the corridor projects that we have underway, um, that relate to vitality. And, um, we've identified, I would say, an economic development team with our, um, creative district director, um, who was, uh, recently, well, fairly recently brought on permanently, um, chamber director, um, U R A director and planning director. And so that's kind of a recognized team. When I thought about this section, um, and discussed this with a couple of those, um, team members, we kind of agreed that there is a need for some more strategic planning in this area. Um, there are a lot of trends, um, that are causing changes, obviously, in our economic marketplace and, um, it would probably do, uh, we probably do well to, um, assess that. And I think, um, that's something we'll probably, um, want to highlight for this area for the discussions. And next is community livability. This is a section with a lot of actions that come from different parts of our plan. Um, some relate to, uh, sort of public dialogue and, um, the structure of municipal governance. Others relate to education. Um, it includes healthy living, food, um, tracking, um, needs of our citizens. And so this is one area that really, um, doesn't have attached funding or capacity with it in many ways. And, um, I've, I've had to step back from some of these areas, um, such as food, healthy foods and that kind of thing. So, um, we we don't have the capacity I think we'd like to have for some of these things. Um, we're dealing with that or I'm dealing with that by reaching out to other staff. Um, got to see if they can incorporate these things. For instance, our parks and rec director, um, regarding some of the food items. Though some of our, um, I would say highlights under this area are that the city administrator engaged a sustainability specialist. That's something that was taken, kind of taken off my plate. And so, um, this consultant is working with staff on training and will be trying to pick up the sustainability. Um, action planning that I think was done a couple, couple of years ago. And then our police department is, um, has, um, joined a program with the county in which they engage mental health professionals to assist them for for interactions that they have with individuals that might need support. And so that's, I think, a really important piece of, um, addressing needs of vulnerable populations. So this is something where we'll try to, um, identify capacity as as we can. And then, then last but not least is built environment, which, um, really is a section that probably relates most of your, your, um, day to day activities. And so, of course, the a key, um, piece of this is the development code update that is underway. That covers about five, five actions in this section that will be addressed through, um, through that effort. And we also have some actions in this section related to creek preservation and restoration and flood mitigation. And those are things that I, I hope we can get to, you know, in the near future. Um, we we are moving forward with design of two phases of Creek Walk Trail. We just actually had a meeting on that today with steering committee and, um, that might be a good springboard for, um, some of these restoration efforts. And let's see, um, yeah, we do. Yeah, we do have a list of about four or five incomplete actions in this section. Um, and maybe once planning staff is done with the code update, we can, and turn to some of, some of those other actions. And so, um, really where we are now are, um, is again wanting to maintain this document as a living plan. And, um, we don't expect a major update soon, but, um, I think our hope is to maybe, um, strive for a minor update in twenty twenty three. And that might give us an opportunity to, um, review census data. At that point, we'll also have completed the hazard mitigation plan update. And in that process, we're going to look at goals and policies that we should integrate in our master plan. Um, we're not doing the two plans together again. So those recommendations, I think we would want to fold back into the master plan. And and we would want to do that if some of our current goals and policies maybe are, you know, maybe we're looking at them a little differently. And so we want to update those. Um, so, yeah, lots of, lots of information, um, but I feel pretty good about what we've done. And this this plan, um, a lot of our actions are kind of specific. And so when we go through it, sometimes, you know, it's, it means we need, we we need to move sideways a little bit, maybe what we originally envisioned, but wasn't quite working out. We have a different approach. So that's, I think, if you have specific actions, you have to kind of have that flexibility a little bit. So. Yeah. So I'm happy to entertain any questions, comments. Um, hopefully this is clear.
I know I was involved, but how long ago was it that we started this? Was it twenty fourteen or something or fifteen or?
We, um, we actually started, let's see, we posted, we posted the RFP in twenty fifteen and started in early fall. And we ended up switching consultants. So we really started like late fall of twenty fifteen. Yeah. Yeah.
Mike.
Um, Karen, just generically speaking, now that this document is kind of mature, have any of these action items just been flat out deleted or just, can you do that?
Well, um, I pulled, I pulled some of them out just to make it a little easier. The ones that we completed, I pulled them out to make it easier to use, but technically, we probably have to update our plan to do that. But that's not a bad idea to kind of clean up. I mean, that might be an appropriate update, kind of clean up this list. Could even have, you know, been in a advisory committee to go through them and maybe say, oh, maybe this isn't pertinent anymore.
Okay. And then are you, do you have the knowledge or are you at liberty to talk about the real time parking signs that you mentioned?
Well, um, I just have a, I just have included a brief update about that. Um, let's find that.
I think the answer is probably no. If you have, if you want in depth discussion, Mike, or if you want more information, I don't know that we know a whole lot about the ins and outs of those.
Okay, that's that's fine. Do you know who would?
Well, actually Roy, um, Ray Chaney, um, he did provide another update and said completion, which I think means full operations um, completed by late twenty twenty one. This, so that would be this fall.
And it would be Roy if you wanted to talk about him, Mike, if you needed more information.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, he loves to talk about parking. I'd spend a couple hours with him one day.
Any, any surprises here?
Nope.
No, it's great.
I think, I mean, I think it's great to know how much progress we've made.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you for putting that, I I'm Mr. Chairman, I'm speaking now. Uh, Karen, thank you for putting that all together. It is important for us to have a report card of where we're going and what the work that you all have been diligently doing.
Very welcome. And and one piece that, um, we haven't included is metrics. And I had worked on that quite a bit last year. Some of the metrics we'd identified just weren't feasible. Um, I'd really love to, to delve into that again soon. I think it's really important. Um, we'd want to really kind of simplify it, I think, from what we originally envisioned. It it's kind of a capacity issue. So, um, I would like to do that. We'll, we'll, I'd like to work it into the work plan if possible. So it'd be updated.
Hey. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
It's very informative.
Yes, Karen.
That's great. Have a great evening.
Okay, I guess the the next item is, um, updated the re, uh, regarding the zoning and subdivision code rewrite.
I don't have any real direct updates. Uh, there have been some discussions recently with Logan Simpson. I think that, uh, the result is that, um, we're going to, uh, add more time. Be able to kind of lengthen the process into next year. So they're doing a, I think, a revised contract and reworking kind of their budget a little bit to make sure that, you know, they're not, uh, coming up empty right in the last few months. But I think, uh, if I remember right, the city administrator told me that uh, looked like maybe at least through, uh, June twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two, the process was going to continue. And and there may also be some other changes with, um, uh, weekly, uh, like an advisory committee, a smaller group, uh, that might meet weekly with the consultants to try to work out some of the, um, thornier issues. So, uh, that's, that's in the works.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thanks. And then item seven, was this informational for us?
Yeah, just FYI, under this new, um, uh, agenda and packet, uh, software that we're using, we're now using the same software that the the city council has been using. Um, it it's a little more limited with flexibility on the agenda. And so there's not really a place to just put an FYI item to make sure you all get it. So I have to actually make it a an item on the agenda so that it's got something to attach to. So you'll see those from time to time.
Okay, yeah, that was interesting. Sure, we're going to be talking a lot about ADUs over the next six.
I have a feeling, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So then, any updates or notice of council action?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, anybody else?
Can I just throw in one off the topic comment? Um, if anybody's interested on Saturday, um, at four thirty at my house, we're going to have a question and answer session on the, um, school bond issue. So, uh, Dan Stewart is going to attend and and give a presentation. So it's it's open to the public. If anybody wants to swing by, you are more than welcome.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah, three fifteen Crystal Hills Boulevard, quarter after three.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, then I guess we are adjourned. This has been a good meeting.
Thank you, everybody. It was good seeing you all.
You too.
Maybe we'll meet someday in person again.
One day.
Okay.